That clock's fast.
Yeah.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm gonna call the order to meeting to order. Um, I left my gavel upstairs, so Eric went to get it for me. That's uh, too much on my mind today, I guess. Um, so with that, uh, the meeting is officially called to order and asked for roll call of aldermen.
Alderman Hazel.
Here.
Alderman Consella.
Here.
Alderman Schmidt.
Here.
Alderman Bittner.
Here.
Alderman Randall.
Here.
Alderman Tyler.
Here.
Alderman Anthony.
Here.
Alderman Ovian.
Here.
Alderman Sillsby.
Here.
Alderman Dillman.
Here.
Alderman Seibert.
Here.
Alderman White.
Here.
Alderman Galletti.
Here.
Alderman Elmore.
Here.
Alderman Wiggington.
Here.
Alderman Musgrove.
Here.
All the aldermen are present. Roll call of department heads.
Police Chief Clay. Fire Chief Poor. Ken Vaughn. Royce Carlisle. Jamie Matrit. Tim Gregowitz. Jim Schneider. Leander Spearman. Chuck Schaefer. Bob Sabo. Debbie Belleville. Anissa McCaskill. City Attorney Horner. City Treasurer Hart.
Here.
Chief Poor and um, Chuck Schaefer are excused. Ladies and gentlemen, um, at this time, I'm gonna ask Boy Scout Troop 11 from Cathedral, if they'd wanna come stand across the front and lead us in the, or with the whole group, fine. Come across the front, lead us in the pledge of allegiance. They're here tonight, working on their citizenship and the community merit badge, I believe. Is that correct, guys?
Right, and uh, communications.
And communications. Well, there's definitely some communications going on here. Ladies and gentlemen, if you'd please stand.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, of liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Wanna back up just a second here, um, remind everyone, um, when we get to public participation in just a moment, um, when you're called on, please step up to the microphone, give your name, try to keep your comments to about two to three minutes. Try to keep them pertinent, uh, if at all possible, to what's on the agenda. Um, also keep your comments in good character. Um, the other thing I wanna mention is that our evacuation, um, policies here, as far as if we had to leave this room for a storm, we've had more than our fair share of stormy weather this year. There are police officers in the room and outside, uh, they would help guide you certainly down the cross, through the lobby, right across from the clerk's desk, uh, the counter, down the steps into the basement into a designated storm areaish, safe area. If we had a fire and we had to leave the building, you'd be asked to leave, please exit out the front door, carefully cross the street, and we'd like everybody to please meet in front of the county courthouse sign, so we can kinda ask each other if we believe that everybody you were sitting with or that you knew were here, make sure they were out of the building. So I appreciate you, uh, paying attention to those directions. At this time, I am going to open public participation, if anyone would like to address the console this evening. Anyone? Yes, sir?
Uh, my name's Ken Belding, I'm with Empire Comfort Systems, and I'm here to speak on motion 11E, and it's for a four-way stop at Freeburg and East Grant Street. Uh, just a short spiel on the problem we have is a good one in that our company is growing, we have over 300 employees now. Uh, most of them use our back parking lot, which, uh, they access and egress through East Grant Street. And when they leave work, trying to get onto Freeburg Avenue, there is considerable blockage of view coming from the north. There's a turn there, and on that corner is a house and cars, and you have to actually pull out into the street to see around it. Um, aside from the speed of the cars, which is well documented, most of the cars are speeding coming down that, that hill. Um, so we're requesting a four-way stop be put at that intersection.
It's on the, it is on the agenda tonight, sir. The arduance will be at the next meeting, but I'll tell you what, it passed through traffic, uh, solidly, and it is a safety concern, so Mike, do you remind me tomorrow, after this supposedly passes fine tonight, uh, I'll go ahead and sign an order that they can get it up before the next meeting, 'cause we'll have to wait, and then it takes 10 days before it becomes an arduance. So that for the sake of safety, since it's moved along through all the committee processes, uh, after it, after it's heard tonight, if that be the case, I'll sign, and sign it and get it going, okay?
Appreciate it, thank you.
Alright, very good, thank you. Yes, sir?
My name is Hal on Abbott, I live at 750 Fort Henry Road in Belleville. And, um, this is probably under old business, but, uh, I have a couple questions concerning the Route 15, uh, shrine development. First is, uh, has the developer signed, has a signed agreement with a high-end hotel? That's what was, the last I saw was in our agreement with them. And if they don't, I would recommend that we give them, the city give them some kinda deadline. 'Cause the high-end hotel is what was gonna drive this, uh, one of the main things in this project, as far as I was concerned. So, uh, I don't, haven't seen or heard that, but if it has been, I'd like to know who it is. And if it hasn't, then I need, I think I propose that we, they get hot.
Well, I can, I can tell you this, I've sat in some meetings personally with some high-end hotels. They're working with several, and, and this project might even, uh, move along a little bigger and faster, so I can tell you, there's every intention to sign, uh, some good quality name hotels as promised, and it, it could be a matter of just days. That's how close they are.
Okay.
Okay?
And the second question was, I understand, I read in a paper, that the developer, who's three guys or whatever from Effingham, they formed a LLC development company, and they registered it in Missouri, is what I read. Well, I don't understand, if they registered it in Missouri, I mean, it's obviously, you know, because of money or tax break, why are we, the state of Illinois, one of part of this, all these agreements was to, they would get a sales tax rebate or abatement of, on construction material from Illinois? But we're in debt, if they register a company in Missouri, why are we doing this? Why should we do this? They should register in Illinois, as far as I'm concerned. And I read this, that they're registered their LLC in Missouri.
I, and, you know, I, I hear your point, but I think most all the developments we've had in the last number of years, many of them, I should say, the shopping centers and all that, have all been registered out of Missouri or other states.
Well.
Um, it just, it just, they, that's where their finance, uh, financial, uh, you know, corporate is. But, but they're about, they're Illinois people, I guarantee you, and, and, uh...
Well, they're, but they're still, well, it's my money too, tax money from the state, and we're broke, the state of Illinois. But we're, they go so they can get a money break, I'm sure it's cheaper, that's why they do it. I understand that.
I, I...
Well, then, they want more money from us. I just think it's malarkey that we give them a sales tax break and they can't come and register their company in Illinois and, like everybody else, where it should be. This is where they're at. And I know why they're doing it, because of money, then they're gonna get more money from us, but they didn't register here in Illinois. That's all I gotta say.
Okay. Yes, ma'am?
Hi, my name is Rose Wilson, and I'm here in support of Chief Clay in regards to the issue, uh, with the flag. I have known Bill Clay since he's been here.
Take the time.
Many years, I would say, a good 20 years. He served honorably in the military, I, I'm 100% certain, he knows what the flag means. I think the flag issue was nothing but for political posturing. Um, I do hope that the movement organization did not take place in the clerk's office on the taxpayer's time, and I hope the same can be said for the interview on the radio this morning. I feel very strongly that this, uh, issue should've been between the chief, the mayor, the officers, and their union. And, uh, nobody should use the Miss Flag, the, the, our flag for political posturing, thank you.
Okay. Yes, sir, back of the room.
South 29th Street, Belleville, Illinois, ever since this, uh, two or three minutes, this, the mayor and the people have been trying to limit our talking to, trying to put a clamp on anything anybody wanted to say. And it's, okay, she wants to brag about Chief Clay. I was in the Vietnam War Marine Rifleman, and I think, uh, if I remember right, Clay was some kinda desk jockey in the Air Force. And I think Chief Clay should be fired for stupidity and un-Americanism. Anybody that's stupid enough to take, to want the American flag taken off the police officer's uniform should be fired for, just if nothing else stupidity. And I got, and when I was out there protesting, somebody from the courthouse stole two of my signs and run off with them. I think he's on a, I think they got him on a picture. And I want those two signs back. And I heard the other neat thing about, uh, there was a riot down at Sixth Street Park. Two or 300 people were rioting down at Sixth Street Park, and the Belleville Police had to call in reinforced from, from about two or three other police departments. Now, I don't know if that's true or not, but that's what I heard, you know? Thank you.
Okay, sir, thank you. Yes, sir? You?
Michael Hackberg, 701 Centerville Avenue. Uh, just wanna remind you that five weeks ago, I asked about the status of the industrial park and the fact that we spent $107,000 of TIF money on a no-bid engineering study to move it along, and I was just wondering what's the status of, what's been done, and when's it gonna be opened and move forward? You told me to contact your office in a couple days, I did send you an email a week after that, and I had no response since then. Thank you.
Michael, I have to go back and look, because I even asked my staff after that meeting if you had called or contacted us. Um, I would suggest, um, Eric, you and Tim are probably the most. I think that, uh, I will have Eric and Tim personally, uh, give you an update, but, uh, there, there's explanation, and I, I even was, made the comment that I was surprised you hadn't followed up with me, as you had mentioned. So if there's a, if it got dropped or lost someplace or whatever, I didn't see it, 'cause I even asked about it to both of my young ladies in the office, so apologize for that. But we'll get, Eric and Tim are here, so they heard me, so we'll, we'll have a follow-up report. Give you explanation where it's at. Yes, sir?
Yes, my name, my name is Paul Bergman, I live at 23 North 40th Street. And, uh, a couple issues, I would love to see at least go up for a vote. Should the American flag be part of the uniform? The, the other issue is, all the real estate that the city owns, uh, I'd like to know how much it costs to maintain, and what are we doing about, uh, selling it or doing something with the property instead of hanging on to it?
Okay. We, uh, just a simple answer, just quickly. Uh, we review it basically yearly. There's a lot of things that we're not allowed to sell, because we obtained, for example, a lot of the flood buyout money that we used many years ago, uh, along Richland Creek. Um, the stipulation was not to build on again or sell, so that's part of the green space. And that's the case with quite a bit of land that we do own, not all. There are some lots we just talked about again recently, they'll go to, uh, Bob Sabo's committee, I believe, Bob, you got a few you're reviewing soon? And, um, they'll be advertised, people can put a closed bid on them. We do that, like I said, every year, one to two, every year, 18 months, two years, that occurs. Uh, and then there's some that we're holding for potential future development for the city, or, are some for sewer, we're doing all this major sewer work mandated by the Illinois EPA. And there's several lots that we've acquired, and until we see exactly how this whole sewer phase gets designed and how much we need, we're holding on to some of these, uh, properties until we see that we don't have to turn around and go back and buy the easements from the public and spend taxpayers' dollars for that, you know, so if we, there's, like I said, there's an explanation. Uh, we do review it, uh, but it's, uh, a lot of it is just that it's, uh, was, uh, either donated or was, uh, purchased with funds that are not to sell too, for green space, so...
Okay, could we maybe have an ideal?
Well, if you, if you want to, uh, simply FOIA the city, we have a, a breakdown, right, Bob? We just went through that in committee, we have a breakdown, it's color-coded, I believe, shows which ones are, you know, the various categories I mentioned briefly.
Okay.
And you can, you can certainly get that.
Alright, thank you.
Alright. Anyone else this evening? Yes, ma'am?
My name's Kathy Draper, my num, my address is 500 South 19th Street, Belleville. I'd like to, to say a couple of things. Um, first of all, I think that, I agree with the last gentleman, that there should be a vote within the council, within the aldermen and everything, to whether or not you're gonna take the flag off of a uniform. I mean, we pledge allegiance before a flag, are we gonna take the flag out? Are we gonna, is Belleville gonna have its own money, where it's, it's not, no longer in God we trust? I mean, this is just crazy, this is ludicrous, I couldn't believe I seen that on TV. I didn't even read it in the paper, I seen it on TV, and I just couldn't believe. I mean, the Girl Scouts, the Boy Scouts, we all ha, they all have the flag on. We are United States of America. Yes, we are in Belleville, but we're not just Belvilles, we are Americans, and that's where the United States of America flag should belong, on the uniforms. If you wanna put one on one side and one on the other, that's fine, I don't have a problem with that. But I don't think the American flag should be taken off completely. And I think that should go to vote before the people to see what, if you wanna do this, then do it at a, do it at a presidential, uh, election or whatever, just like an amendment of anything else. Second of all, I'd like to say, with these properties, I have a property, can't cart across the street from my house. Uh, the address is 407 and 409 South 19th Street, you're aware of where it is, where it is. Um, I'm still having issues on that property. The police will not do anything as far as make the neighbors not use the property as long as they cut the grass, and they don't even always cut it all the way. Right now, the hill is like knee-deep, and the rest of it's fairly flat. He's going to end up taking it eminent domain. I understand that you don't wanna mess with it, I understand, as long as he cuts the grass, then, and he can use it, that's fine. Okay, I don't want him to have the power of it, I don't want the ne, the neighbors of the neighborhood that I neighborhood watch patrol in the neighborhood, bicentennial neighborhood, neighborhood association, we don't want him to be able to use that property. I get it, you don't care, you wouldn't want me to come over and sit in your boat when you went home. He does what he wants, you know who I'm talking about, I don't need to say any names. But I still have issues with him, yes, the police are working with me with the cars, but the property is still an issue. Third thing I'd like to say real quick is, if I was Stewart's neighbor, I would be having a cow, okay? His yard is an eyesore, as far as I'm concerned, all them signs need to come down. And I just thank God of the United States of America that I ain't his neighbor, that's all I got to say.
Well, the, the reason Stewart can have those signs, and I'm not saying I like them at all, but because it is the United States of America.
I agree.
And, and that's, 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 you know, so there's some things we, we are limited what we can do. It is freedom of speech.
It is freedom of speech. I'm just stating the fact, if it was in my neighborhood and it was across the street from my house.
I'm not telling you I don't...
Me and him would have issues, because...
I, I understand.
I don't have that.
I understand. Okay, is there anyone else this evening from the audience? Chief Clay?
My name is Bill Clay, Chief of Police in Belleville. I just wanna make some clarifications about the flag flap, I believe that's how it's, uh, been put in a paper. Uh, just to give you some absolute facts about it, because I think you need to have them and not be driven, uh, by all the hyperbole that you're hearing and, and those types of things. Uh, in 2006, uh, the administration at that time decided that we would have a single patch, which would be the Belleville Police Patch, but they would allow for you to continue to wear the flag if you chose to. That was the policy, that's the policy that's been in place right now. As a result of the 2006 policy, we have officers who are dressed like B with a department patch, American flag, uh, department patch, no flag, or no patches. That's the standard right now, so it's just sorta all over the place. The July 7th policy, uh, was designed with a couple of things in mind. Couple of things in mind. We, I wanted to get some uniformity, some symmetry back to the uniforms, and I wanted to have a shoulder patch policy that is consistent with the vast majority of law enforcement agencies throughout the United States, as well as the metroies. Most have a double shoulder patch, city patch, or a county patch, or state. There was never, there has never been a order that the American flag is to be stripped from our uniforms. That was never issued by anyone, and I have the memos that we sent out to support that. That was never the case. The Police Department Command met with the union leadership. We talked about what we were trying to do and the reasons for it, and we also wanted to solicit from them if there was any concerns that they were having in reference to that. There were not. But here's what happened. Unfortunately, some of the employees within the department, they chose to lie. They chose to release misinformation to the public. They chose to tell the public that we ordered that the American flags be immediately removed from our uniforms. That would've been offensive to me, had something like that occurred, so that was not the case. We had never said that. But this lie resulted in, uh, a public and social media uproar and a backlash. And that is understandable, if that is in fact what I did as a police chief. If I said, "Take all the flags off of our uniforms and do so immediately", I can understand that people would be upset if that's the way it was told to them. But that's not the case, and it never was the case. I met with the mayor, I met with several aldermen, I also spoke to reporters with BND, a reporter. And after consultation and speaking, I knew that I had to modify the July 7th, uh, policy change, uh, and I did so on July 17th. What did I do? I simply said that if you choose to wear the American flag along with the department policy, if that's your option, you may do so. If you wanna go with the double patch policy, you also have that option. In our current policy, our manual, we provide for the wear of two authorized department patches. It makes no mention as to whether or not it is a American flag or city. We also have in that same section, Section E, we authorize the wear of the American flag as a pin, either above your, I'm not following my own rules, above your name tag center, but I like to wear it here, so I wear mine here. I also wear a little American flag as my tie tag. So, there is no issue as far as the flag, and as far as us wanting to pull the flag down. I don't know how that got started, but that's not the case. I also wanna do a couple things here. I met with some aldermen, and I met with the mayor. But I really wanna acknowledge and thank Alderman Sillsby, Alderman Seibert, Alderman Ovian, and Alderman White. They were very gracious, they were very considerate. They came to me when all of this was up, and they wanted me to tell them. They were in search of the facts, they wanted to know exactly what had occurred and what I said. And I spoke to them about it, and I'm not saying that they necessarily had to agree with me, but they respected what we were doing this for, and they knew that there was no conspiracy here or something against the flag. As I think about this, I don't know if my timing may have been lousy. If in fact, when you think about the Confederate flag flap and that coming down, and if this crazy chief decided to do something at the wrong time. So I think that that may had something to tie in, and people was thinking that this is some political correct deal and some conspiracy, and if we're gonna get all the flags, we're gonna do that. That was not the case. And I would also like to add that sacrifice and service to country, in my mind, is a true measure of patriotism. I love the flag, but the flag does not determine whether or not I'm a patriot, or whether or not I love my country. I will tell you to look to this alderman here, who has served 30 years in the United States Air Force, 30 years. That's sacrifice and service to country. And for him to sit and talk to me and understand, even though he didn't necessarily agree with the policy change, that he respected it, and he understood that there was nothing behind it, nothing sinister behind it. I will close with saying, the policy has been modified. The Police Department is moving on, and we all need to do the same. Thank you.
No, I can, sir, I've got a mic right here. You know, as, as somebody who was part of, uh, gathering folks together to celebrate the flag, I'd just like to clarify a few things. One, absolutely nothing against Chief Clay, that's for sure, and that was a great speech. Number two, just as he said, the facts are, the memo stated that the Belleville patch was to be on both shoulders. So although they did not say remove the American flag, that's what was happening. If you're gonna have a Belleville patch on each side, there's not gonna be an American flag any longer, and Chief Clay admitted that. But now, since a few people spoke up, now the American flag can still be on the uniform. I don't think this was ever, uh, a bad issue, I think this was something that it was good to be discussed. I think the timing was bad, the Chief Clay said, the timing was very bad. Why take an American flag off a uniform, why not have it there? We've had decades worth of Belleville Police uniforms with American flag on it. And I just didn't wanna be a part of the city of Belleville when that went away. And I think about the, the 100 people who were standing out here, I don't think they wanted that to happen either. And so we're here to show our pride in our flag, our pride in our country, our unity, our patriotism. Nothing against Chief Clay. Chief Clay's a great man, there's no question about that. Was this a bad decision? Yeah, it was a bad decision, bad timing. Doesn't need to happen. And I hope the officers can still feel comfortable wearing the American flag on their shoulder. And I hope they can do it with pride.
Okay.
I, I hope everybody understands the reasoning for standing with a flag. It's not, nothing bad, this wasn't a protest. This was a rally in support.
Okay, with all those comments, I'm gonna close public participation. We're gonna move to, uh, we have a presentation. At this time, I will ask Mr., I'm gonna ask Eric to introduce our guest.
Thank you, uh, last year, uh, 2014, the city received a grant from the Illinois Historic Preservation Agency to, uh, to create a nomination for an area, uh, part of Belleville, as a National Registered Historic District, which differs from a local historic district, and I'll let, uh, Mr. Allen kind of explain how that all works, but... And I'll let Mr. Allen kind of explain how that all works, but we received a $14,000 grant, we did have a $6,000 match on that grant, but Mr. Allen, Michael Allen with the Preservation Research Office, is the consultant to the city. They were chosen through a RFP process by the Historic Preservation Commission and the council approved it. But I will let Michael talk about the area that's been identified, and then the nomination process and what it all means.
Good evening, thanks Eric. Great to be here before the council. And primarily, the purpose of this informational presentation is to show you what's in the district, because I think with the surveys that have gone on in Belleville since 2009 and the original boundary proposed here, there have been some changes, and you might want to know what's in and what's out. So we want to walk you through that and also the status of this project. Up front, I'll just say it's been a real pleasure to work with Eric and get the support from the city of Belleville, the Belleville Public Library, and also your Belleville Historical Society has just been invaluable in this process, and you're lucky to have those assets. All right, so if you can see this image up here on the wall, this is the district that got nominated, that is now pending for listing at the federal level. We call it the Blair Historic District, although a couple of weeks ago, when I came in here to present this, at a public meeting, we were calling it the Downtown Belleville North Historic District, but under the guidance of Historic Preservation Commission members and members of the public who were present, we decided to rename this in honor of George Blair, founder of Belleville. That is a very well-founded decision, because all of the blocks in this district are located in his original gift of 25 acres to found this city in 1814 and moved the county seat here from Cahokia. So this district includes 78 buildings, 57 of them are contributing, 21 are non-contributing, get into that in a second. It's significant in architecture as well as commerce, being the commercial heart of Belleville, and it has a very long period of significance. That's just a fancy term for the years in which this was considered historic, and the years in which alterations to different buildings would make a building count towards the historic status. You can see what's in the district. We have resources ranging from the beautiful Reichert Block up here of 1880, the old post office, and even St. Paul's Church, a modern building, is contributing to the district. On June 19th last month, the Illinois Historic Sites Advisory Council, appointed by the governor, reviewed this nomination, approved it. On June 30th, this was sent from the state of Illinois to the National Park Service, which has final jurisdiction over this. We anticipate a listing by September 1st. The Park Service rarely has any comment, most of the substantial review comes at the state level, so stay tuned. Also, with Eric's help, we are putting on a second public meeting in August to look at, or present some of the benefits of being included in this district. So what does this mean? Belleville's got local districts, so you may already know, but this national designation essentially is the primary motivation for getting historic tax credits. The building has to be contributing to get a federal historic tax credit, which is a 20% investment tax credit on income-producing property. It's the credit that Kurt Arndtger is seeking for the Turner Hall. With this listing, he'll be able to actually get the credit at the end of the process. This is necessary to that step, but it's also available to all the other 57 buildings in the district that are contributing. It does not impose any restrictions, it doesn't make this a local district, any other actions would have to come through the city council. All this does is create a boundary for tax credits. Just quickly, we came about this boundary by looking at a larger area that came out of a 2009 survey. In 2014, we had hoped for this larger area, including the Franklin Neighborhood, but after consulting with the Illinois Historic Preservation Agency, they determined that could not be included in this district for a number of reasons. Obviously, we, because of past changes around the Courthouse Square, we could not go east on Main Street, although one of the most hopeful things that came out of this was that the agency did agree that East Main could be a potential future historic district if we wanted to pursue that. So just looking, we are kind of isolated, and some people have asked, "Why is it just the west side?" Well, the square has a few newer buildings that just wouldn't make a defendable boundary, but that's not saying anything about what's east of the square, it's definitely eligible. Here's what the district looked like in 1867 on this beautiful bird's eye view. You can see the blocks of Main Street, 100 and 200 block, really haven't changed a whole lot in character, they've been very distinctly urban with two-story buildings mostly up on the sidewalk line. So this district had excellent integrity. Just through some views here. Looking at the district, just kind of a rule of thumb on contributing versus non-contributing, basically looking at what the building looked like when the historic cutoff was in 1960. This building here is non-contributing, as is the building next door, because of their facade alterations. We do believe a building like this could be made contributing if someone wanted to use tax credits by removing that covering and restoring that main facade. In fact, that's already happened on the old Washington Theater before historic tax credits, the owner used her own money to remove the covering there, and of course, Mr. Arndtger is using that for the Turner Hall building, 1924 structure that I know everyone here is very familiar with. We have some gems in the district, a wide range of buildings. The post office by James Knox Taylor, a very important federal supervising architect, whose buildings can be found all over the country. On A Street, we even though picked up the township office as a contributing building, might not instantly think of it as historic, but it's past the 50-year mark, and we want to create a blueprint for possible caretaking and stewardship for all buildings. And so these are some of the other commercial buildings we find in the district outside of Main Street. Even the southwestern Bell Building ended up being contributing to this district, as well as the St. Paul's Church complex, a wide period of significance allowing for a broad range of recognition for different types of resources. Over in Illinois, these buildings are all in the district. With the windows closed up in the first floor, this building's still contributing. We err on the side of trying to make as many buildings contribute as possible, so they're all ready for the historic tax credit. On Washington, we did pick up the 100 block here, some German streethouses and other residential buildings converted to offices. Corner building here is not contributing. Two bungalows here are contributing. Some residential buildings that we did pick up. If property is income-producing, if it's rental property, even if the owner lives in one of the apartments, it is eligible for this 20% federal credit, so we think that's a good option for these buildings in the future. As I said, there is a 20% federal historic tax credit, and that will be the primary focus of our August meeting. So as of yet, Illinois has not followed in its neighboring states' footsteps with the state historic tax credit, although there has been movement in the past a couple legislative sessions. Any questions?
Alderman, do you have any questions? Alderman? Okay, thank you for coming here, and appreciate it very much, and Michael, and so we'll know after September as to the final decision.
Yes. Okay, Eric will notify everything.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Okay, we move on, we have no other recognitions or appointments this evening. I move to the approval of the minutes of the city council meeting from July 6, 2015. What's your pleasure?
I move, we accept and file the approving minutes from July 6, 2015.
We have a motion by Alderman Schmidt to accept and file. We have a second by Alderman Tyler. Do I hear any discussion or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor of accepting and filing signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Claims, payroll, and dispersments, what's your pleasure?
I have the claims, payroll, dispersments filed, received.
We have a motion by Alderman Elmore and a second by Alderman Schmidt to pay the claims, payroll, and dispersments. Any discussion? Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Dillman.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Motion carries. Alderman Anthony.
Yes, Your Honor, on behalf of the Fire Police Committee, I'd like to make a motion to approve the MABUS mutual aid agreement. So moved.
Motion by Alderman Anthony, second by Alderman Hazel. Discussion on this? Motion, roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Dillman.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Motion carries. Alderman Anthony.
Yes, Your Honor, on behalf of the Fire Police Committee, I would like to make a motion to approve the preliminary plan for the final phase of Green Mount Manor. So moved.
A motion by Alderman White.
Second.
Second by Alderman Dillman, he serves in that committee, I'll let him make the second. Any discussion on this preliminary plan? Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Dillman.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Motion carries. Master Sewer.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the bid and award air, plumbing, and heating for Phase III Long-Term Control Plan in the amount of $21,891,000.
A motion by Alderman Dillman, do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Wiggington. Discussion on this? Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Dillman.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Motion carries. Also, Alderman Dillman.
A motion to allow the city to grant underground utility easement right to Amherst, Illinois at the location of 900 Sheil Street.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman White, do I hear any discussion? Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Dillman.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Motion carries. At this time, traffic, Bob.
On behalf of the Traffic Committee, I would like to make a motion to change a two-way stop to a four-way at East Grant and Creeberry Avenue. So moved, Your Honor.
We have a motion, and we have a second by Alderman Seibert. Any discussion on this? This motion is to approve and to have the proper ardentance drawn. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Sounds like this went through committee fine. The gentleman came, we had also had a call from him about some safety concerns. I will go ahead and sign an executive order tomorrow. The ardentance can't be on, it didn't make the cut. We had a couple of people from staff unfortunately out for funeral or vacation, somehow it just didn't get to Garrett, but that's okay. We'll get it at the next meeting, but I'll sign the order immediately and get the stop signed up, change it, okay? At this time, we go to a motion from Streets and Grades, so I'll go to Mr. Seibert.
Yes, Your Honor, I have three motions to make. Is there an objection? I haven't read one.
Yes.
Everybody okay with that?
Six.
Okay, we have, okay, go ahead, proceed.
A motion to approve the apparent low-bitter Hank's Excavating for $229,687.90 for Phase II, one need to place. Motion to approve the preliminary engineering agreement with Railroad Consultant STV in the amount of $15,000 for the West Belleville Bike Trail Phase III. And a motion to approve an additional light to be installed to the east side of Meadow Art Lane in the amount of $3,300. So moved.
A motion by Alderman Seibert, do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Dillman, do I hear discussion? Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Dillman.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Motion carries. We have a couple communications, two of them.
12A, Gingerbread Cookie Day, Saturday, December 12, 2015. Request approved the opening of the City Hall Lobby on Saturdays, December 12, 2015, from 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. for the annual Gingerbread Cookie Day, formerly called the Gingerbread Cookie Walk. The event is hosted by the Belleville Gingerbread Committee and sponsored by Belleville Main Street. City Hall will be one of the cookie pickup locations.
Why don't we go ahead and read them together if there's no objection? Proceed.
12B, Art and Wine Walk, Saturday, November 7, 2015. Communication from Belleville Main Street requesting permission to hold their annual Art and Wine Walk on Saturday, November 7, 2015, from 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. They're requesting the use of the northeast quadrant of the public square, and there will be no street closures.
Yes, ma'am.
I move, we grant both of those.
Motion to approve the two communication requests just read. Do I have a second? Second by Alderman Bittner, do I have discussion? All in favor approving these two requests through the communication process signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. We have no petitions this evening. I'd ask for a motion to read by title only, Resolution 3235 and 3236. Motion by Alderman Sillsby, do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Seibert. All in favor of, yes, sir.
Your Honor, if I may, okay, with respect to Resolution Number 3235, it's going to be my intention to abstain, and I'd like to explain why. While my employer is and was not engaged in a competitive bid for this business, we do engage in the retail municipal bond business, and as such, I prefer to remove any perception of a potential conflict of interest.
We understand, so you're going to, your vote will just represent the second resolution, okay? Still have no problem, we can read them, but he's noting it right now that he's abstaining[1591.76]